Start with putting the microphone on, having just reminded everyone about that. And then start with a big welcome to the first Housing Policy Committee for many, many years, since before most of us knew about it. So it's good to be here. We've got the agenda papers, assuming everyone's read those. Go through some housekeeping in a moment, but I just want to say a few words, saying thank you for being here. We've got a whole team of officers here today. We've got this committee of nine people dedicated to the housing policy decisions over the course of this municipal year. And the change for us now is as we move into a new system of committees, is that we have some quite big decisions that we now need to take over the course of this year. And we, as a cross-party committee, need to take those, taking full responsibility for the service that we've been appointed to oversee. So we're lucky that we are supported by a good team of officers here. So I just want to reflect on that point of responsibility. So let me just run through some of the housekeeping stuff. So we've got a couple of members of the public in too. The meeting is being webcast and we've got officers in attendance. So in terms of fire alarms, we always have to say fire alarms, which we're not expecting today. And obviously, if there is a fire, then get out of the building, basically straight to the back of the building, down two flights of stairs, out to the back, and we meet in the Tudor Square. Tudor Square is for the assembly point. Phones, can everyone make sure their phones are put on silent? It's open to the public. We've got members of the public here. I believe we've got one petition and two questions. We've got some people in the public gallery. And that's it. So I think that's enough from me. So I'll now go around and ask people to introduce themselves. So I've asked the committee to introduce themselves first and then go around the office, I think, as is normal. So I'll go around in this sort of way. So councillor Fox.
Good morning councillor Fox, a member for Burghill.
Good morning councillor Ben Curran, councillor for Walkley and Labour's spokesman on the committee.
Yeah councillor Stuart Auckland, councillor for Gories Park Ward.
Councillor Bullwood, councillor for Woodes Ward.
Councillor Sophie Thornton, councillor for Beechfield and Greenall Ward.
Councillor Hayby for Broomhill and Shrewsbury.
Thank you. And last but not least, on my left.
Councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Stonington and Liberal Democrat Vice Chair. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I just want to make that, and I hope this is okay, Paul. If Paul, councillor needs to ask a question, then we're just going to make arrangements to have it read out, I think, on his behalf. And it's the way that we're adjusting this committee. So I just want to say that so that people in the room know what's going on there. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go through the officer contingent now, we've got quite a few people here, and just for a change, I'm going to go around the other way. So over to.
I'm David Hollis, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Good morning, my name is Ashman Ali, Executive Director of Operational Services.
Morning, my name is Ryan Keyworth, I'm the Council Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Morning everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm the Director of Direct Services for the council and I cover the repairs and maintenance service.
Hello, I'm Janet Sharp, I'm the Director of Housing for the Housing and Neighbourhood Services in the council.
Hi, my name's Dean Peaker, I'm the Service Manager of the Income Management and Financial Inclusion Team within Housing and Neighbourhoods of the council.
I'm Alice Nicholson, Politician Improvement Officer, working alongside Rachel as these committees start.
Morning everybody, I'm Rachel Marshall, I'm Principal Committee Secretary, working in Democratic Services, supporting this committee, working with Alice.
Sorry, that's everyone here. Apologies for absence. So I think we've got apologies from councillor Said and councillor Crossland, is that right, Rachel?
No, it's not allowed.
Right, okay. Who have we got apologies from? Councillor Said?
Yes.
Just councillor Said, right, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, have you not received apologies from councillor Belbin?
So yes, councillor has given apologies, but she's a substitute member, so she's not actually required to be here. So I think we've accounted for everyone now. That's great, thank you. Okay, so if move on to item three on the agenda, it's exclusion of press and public. I'm not aware of any reason to do so. Nothing there, is there? Okay. Number four is declarations of interest. So question, do any of the elected members here need to raise a declaration of interest or wish to do so? No one indicating? Okay, we'll move on. So then on to public questions and petitions. So as I think I indicated, we've got one petition and two public questions. So let's just see where we are with those. Alice, have you got, I think we've got, the petitioner we're not expecting, are we?
No.
Right. Let me just, have I got a note of it?
I'll do it.
I think it's fair to say that as the petitioner isn't here, I'll just announce that we have received a petition, it has 15 signatures, it's about tenants at Haralden Road and wants some action to deter feral doves. I was going to respond to that simply by saying that I understand officers have this in hand now and will deal with that. I presume that we have, although it says the petition is anonymous, we'll have contact details and we'll be able to keep them updated. So I wasn't going to propose to spend more time on that now. Everyone happy with that? Okay. Shall we go on to the questions then? Because we have got people here today with the questions. So, right. Makes sense to take Emily Proctor first. Have you got a place to go to, to use a mic? Yes. So I've got a note to your question here, but maybe the other committee members don't. If you want to ask your question, then we'll give a short answer.
Fair, thank you. So I privately rent in Broomhill and I've faced a lot of problems with my landlord. Sort of when we got into the flat, it was really dirty and our landlord also hasn't cleaned things in time and fixed things in time. Many of my friends in Crooks face the same problems. I was just wondering if members would support the introduction of a selective landlord licensing scheme in Crooks and Broomhill, as supported by Sheffield Labour students.
Right, thank you for answering that, asking that question. So I've got a look from officers, which is important because the private sector housing team of the council is an important one. As I would say, that any tenant experiencing issues with poor property condition or concerns related to management can report them to the Private Housing Standards Service, who will investigate. And it's important that tenants, in the first instance, report repairs to the landlord to give them the opportunity to carry out the necessary works. It's always important that landlords have notice of requests for repairs. On selective licensing, in order to introduce a scheme, Private Housing Standards must gather evidence to prove that the issues in the area are serious and extensive and meet the conditions as set out in the government guidance and legislation for that matter. We've said that we're happy to explore the need for selective licensing schemes where it can be clear that there's a need and would welcome a further conversation with you to discuss this further. You may be aware of this, the council has, to date, had two specific selective licensing schemes. One in Fervale, Page Hall, and the one that's currently operating, which is around the Chesterfield Road, Abidale Road areas. You're probably aware, have been arguments that some local authorities, I think in Europe in particular, have introduced borough-wide selective licensing schemes. It's something that's been under discussion quite a bit in a number of political parties. Not speaking on behalf of the committee, you're probably aware, it's my party policy, Green Party policy to support selective licensing on that basis, I think it is with the Labour Group too. It's not a decision of the committee, yet it probably will come into the work plan, but we'll have to discuss that. So I'm just going to say that as the chair, it's very much on the council's radar, so thanks for raising that. Thank you, I hope that's good.
Thank you.
Shall we pass over to Geoff Cox to ask the other question from the public? Thank you.
Hi Douglas, can I add to that? Can I add to that answer? Can I add to that answer?
Sorry, not at the moment. So the idea about public question is just we have one question for public, one answer that normally comes from me as the chair, and then we'll go from there. But there's plenty more conversation on that topic and everything else later on. Okay, thanks. Geoff, so we've got a note of your question, again, I'm not entirely sure if other committee members have got it, but yeah, ask it. I'm aware you're asking this question to another committee as well, which it may be more appropriate to go to. So it's a case of getting this on the table, I'll probably give you a short answer. But over to you to ask your question.
Thank you, and thank you in particular for taking this as a late question. So I'm speaking today on behalf of the South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. You remember the ARUP report identified about 30% of the city's emissions come from housing. This question today relates to the decarbonisation of the private housing stock, but there will be other questions later this year on social housing to follow. I think a lot of private owners are prepared to invest in their properties, but they lack the confidence to know where to start, you know, they don't want to get ripped off, you know, that kind of stuff. Polls repeatedly show that local authority-led advice centres have much greater public confidence that the advice is impartial. And I think this is badly needed in Sheffield at the moment, especially as the South Yorkshire Energy Centre that was housed at Healy City Farm has now closed. So I think the argument is that a small investment by the city council in an advice centre, perhaps jointly funded with other public bodies, can release that private capital, it can stimulate the market, and it can reduce the city's carbon emissions. So the question is, would this committee recommend or be prepared to support the setting up of a suitable impartial advice centre? The specific name I gave it doesn't matter, that was just for convenience. I recognise that the Regeneration and Climate Committee will have an interest in this, so I've asked the identical question of that committee also. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. I said I'd give a short answer, and that is that we will refer it on to officers and also our colleagues in the other committee to have a look at. So we'll do that. Just in terms of taking this forward, I've had some useful advice from officers that feels this is actually more in the remit of the Climate Change, Regeneration and Transport Policy Committee. I don't think anyone on this committee was on the Climate Change, Aramton and Transport Committee from last year, but we did have three quite detailed sessions where members from all parties were able to discuss a lot of the issues around retrofitting and received evidence from external organisations, including one, I think, the Manchester Cooperative. But it was about this sort of arrangement in Manchester, about unlocking the capital that's available by private owners who do have some money to invest in climate change measures and see what that can be done, as distinct from retrofitting of the council's own stock. So that is something that we as a council have worked on in some detail over the last year. I hope it will go forward and for that reason, it will be appropriate for the other committee to take that forward. So thanks for flagging it up, I think it's always useful to have that on the radar, and I'm sure we'll want to fit that into the work plan, so that we keep tabs on it too. Thank you. Okay. That's all the public questions I'm aware of, unless you're going to surprise me with anything? No? Okay, all right. In that case, we'll move on to the substantive issues here. So on item six, what we're proposing here is that our Director of Housing will give a presentation on really an overview of the housing service. It's a large thing that Janet will tell us about. I've said to everyone that I'm assuming that people have read their agenda papers, and although there's 25 or so slides, we're not proposing to go through those individually, the director will talk for five or 10 minutes or so, and then I think we can have a few questions after that. So over to Janet, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. So one of the things I would like to do this morning is just provide a brief overview of the Housing and Neighbourhood Services within the council. In some of the work areas, it's quite a broad service, and it covers quite a lot of both strategic responsibilities as well as operational responsibilities. And also that fits in nicely with this committee, but also with other committees that have commenced. So I just want to give a brief overview of the different parts, and then happy to pick up any questions. And also some of the areas this committee may require more detailed, in-depth discussions, and I'm more than happy to bring that forward to this committee. So in terms of the service, in terms of our strategic responsibilities, so we are responsible for the city's housing strategy. And that really sets out, you know, in terms of our housing ambitions, our housing need. It's not just, it's about increasing the supply of homes from all tenures in the city, but also making sure they have the right quality standards, we have a home to suit individual needs, we address the gaps in the housing market. And also what that comes with is clear delivery plans. A delivery plan for social housing, a delivery plan for private housing, a delivery plan for our older persons' independent living, our growth plan, and obviously, you know, looking at our homeless prevention and student housing plans. So that will be refreshed this year. And also I'm sure that the committee will certainly be interested in some of the areas that obviously are within the remit of this committee. We are also the regulator, the statutory regulator, for all housing in the city, regardless of tenure. So if there are issues with quality, if there are issues with safety, if there are issues with landlord management of tenancies, then that will fall within the remit of my service. And we've got, obviously, we will act for and responsible, obviously, for people, particularly if living in the private rented sector or struggling, as per the conversation from Emily earlier. We are also the largest landlord in the city. We are landlord to 39,000 homes, council homes. We also have a role in working with our housing associations, our registered providers in the city, who have together around about 18,000 homes. And also, we manage a part of our council estate, around 3,000 leasehold properties, mainly blocks of flats and masons. So we've very much, since the introduction of right to buy, most council estates are multi-tenure. And in some areas, we are the smallest tenure, because obviously many have been sold. So we very much deliver in that multi-tenure housing services in the areas. We're also got responsibility for the main compliance of all of our stock, be it fire, be it asbestos, be it legionella, be it gas, be it electrics, and that's where we work really closely with the Director of Direct Services and the Repair Service to make sure that we are making sure that people are safe in their homes and homes are suitable. We've also got probably one of the largest housing investment programmes in the council. Over the next five years, we will be spending in the region of 653 million. Half of that will be on existing stock for capital improvements, and half obviously presently is on new supply, increasing the stock. And I know that has been a priority for the council for a number of years. And also, we will be, we spend each and every year round about £40 million on repairs and maintenance services. So that day-to-day services, those cyclical programmes and those planned programmes. One of the things that we are doing and prioritising is, most of the council housing stock is an EPPC, if that means something to everyone in the committee. And we will be bringing forward to this committee is a roadmap of what could be the steps to achieve net zero. And that enables us probably to have a much stronger position in working with government and external funding to be able to improve the quality and the warmth of homes in our city and different models for doing that. As I mentioned, we've also got an ambitious stock increase programme, and we also have quite a large workforce, you know, well over 900 officers who work delivering both operational services, strategic services, and obviously statutory services. We are responsible and statutory lead for homeless and rough sleeping alongside many other areas. And we have a budget each year of around £160 million. So that brings together all of the investment and obviously all of the operational services and those that are carried out by other services across the council to provide tenant services. And we have, and we take on significant numbers of apprentices and graduates each year, and that is helping us to become more reflective of the customers we serve and giving real opportunities, particularly for younger people and those disadvantaged and furthest away from the labour market. So in the presentation, it covers, you know, a number of key areas. The slide deck is quite large, and it probably could have been four times larger. However, I do think it was really aims to give a snapshot of some of the key areas. You will have obviously the structure chart in here, you know, so please, please feel free, you know, to contact either heads of service or service managers if there's any things that you need help and assistance with. And I think there are a few things that I would like to go through. The largest funding we have for the Housing and Neighbourhood Service is we have a ring-fenced income and expenditure account, and that is the HRA. And that brings in rental income. So it's, the services for tenant services is wholly funded from rental income alongside other bits and pieces of funding. So that comes to about £150 million a year, which is why it's really important that we collect our rent. If we can't collect the rent, we can't invest in the stock. And we also are fortunate that we plan for a one-year, five-year and a 30-year period, so that we've got a balanced business plan for the 30 years. But obviously, there are lots of assumptions that are taking place. Rental income and how rents will increase over time, inflation, borrowing costs, costs of living, and also investment. So we've got this ring-fenced account that also delivers all the main statutory services, including some of the other council services outside of my service that support tenants in the city, and also things like lettings, things like getting the income in, things like estate management, tenancy management, the investment programmes. And we can see from the report, you know, that that's quite extensive, and there is a breakdown of the five-year capital programme, and obviously more than happy to go through that in some detail. And we can also break down the capital programme in geographical areas, if that is helpful. In terms of tenancy management, we operate out of 15 local areas, so we're much, so we're close to the communities. And we've also got quite a strong tenant governance around the Housing and Neighbourhood Services, particularly council housing. We work with over 40 TARA's plus a lot of community groups, very passionate about their homes, very passionate about the standards that we are setting, and also how we allocate our resources. We are presently in the process of reviewing our tenancy management model, our housing plus model, so that we are much more visible on the estates, we are tackling things early, and much more focused on enforcement and dealing with breaches much earlier. And I think that comes from feedback from local members, from our tenants, and also from our leaseholders on our estate and other organisations. So what we're doing is changing more to have more people on the estates, more people tackling things early, because I think that's some of the feedback that we've received. And also, you will have seen in the news that, you know, we're working within a new social housing regulator framework. So one of the things that we are also doing is making sure that the services that we deliver are fully compliant with those new regulations. We have produced this year a new customer engagement strategy, that's two-way conversations, and also a set of landlord commitments that have been developed by tenants and also by tenants with offices, to make sure we're measuring the things that are really important to tenants and not sometimes what officers want to measure. So I think that's a really good partnership and way forward. I think in terms of private sector housing, we regulate about over 45,000 private sector homes, private rented homes, plus obviously those in owner occupation. But I think the PRS sector is the fastest-growing sector. And we are very reliant on the private rented sector, because we do not have the supply of social housing in the city that we need to meet demand. And so we're reliant on really good landlords who do deliver really good standards, so that we can utilise that, particularly for those particularly in need. Unfortunately, like all major cities, we have some landlords that do not improve their homes, that do not tackle day-to-day repairs, that probably are not probably not the best at tenancy management. And given we have lots of very vulnerable people living in private rented housing, this is why we, this is the priorities we have for the private sector housing team. We do have a targeted approach for selective licensing, we take a geographical approach based on where there is huge concentrations of specific issues. But we also have officers that are managing on a regular basis the 3,000 houses in multi-occupation, checking asylum properties, checking obviously issues across the city that tenants are raising and also disrepair. And above all, we are obviously regulating high-rise, high-risk buildings in the city, following obviously the awful grandful charter, but also to making sure our high-rise in the city are safe. And we do a huge amount of work with leaseholders in private buildings to make sure that, you know, they are accessing the government funding that is available. And we are also supporting them with their management companies in terms of how they can afford any future repairs. And we do have a student accreditation scheme. We also have quite a lot of specialist housing that we deliver ourselves and also with partners. We have 30 sheltered housing schemes. We have got our first integrated housing and health scheme at Buchanan Green in Parsons Cross that's coming on stream in July. If the committee members would like a visit to that, that would be fantastic. And I think that's setting a different standard for older persons' accommodation and for people with learning disabilities. We have been bringing forward some particularly properties for those with learning disabilities, and also additional homes for, to support our corporate parent responsibilities for care leavers as well, so certainly for young people. So we are building across, in terms of the housing offer, a greater, different types of accommodation. On page 29 of your pack, I've give you a sample of some of the headline performance indicators, that's across housing and repair service. What we do have in both services, we have a whole range of performance measures that we measure each week, obviously each month, and a lot of that we do take and share with our tenant board. But we also have indicators for our private sector homes, for our energy, and also our statutory regulator responsibilities, and also key compliance. So again, you know, it's quite extensive, we tried to pick for the presentation a small number of key areas, but there is obviously behind that lots of other performance indicators that we have available that we can bring to the committee if required. And we're not without our challengers, you know, the business plan, because it is a self-rank ring-fenced account, it, you know, it suffers from some of the similar issues that other accounts in the council do. It's very sensitive to rent increases, it's very sensitive to inflation, it's very sensitive to cost increasing, and that has to be managed within the income envelope that we have. And that has to be managed within the income envelope that we have available. Cost of living is affecting many, so we're doing a lot of work to support people. Fuel poverty is significantly on the increase and that is a concern for us. And also, we do have some condition issues, both in the public and private sector, which we're trying to target and to try and improve those positions. And also with a greater focus on energy efficiency and improvements that enable homes to be much warmer than what we are now. And that relationship between poor homes and health is a major consideration of that. And unfortunately, some of our poorer performance, energy efficiency is in the private sector. And that's why our roadmap will start with the social housing stock, but then we'll move into the private sector residential stock. And what we are building up is by archetype, a design standards that we hope that homeowners who really want to invest in their properties, we will be able to help and support them to make sure that they are improving homes that is suitable for that archetype and building on some of the inappropriate practices that took place on previous green grant arrangements where people ended up with works that possibly that archetype didn't need. So hopefully that is a very quick whistle-stop tour of our services. We have got obviously on the forward plan lots of things in terms of things that I'm sure the committee would like to consider and also areas that obviously may require decisions to improve the quality of homes in the city over the course of the committee year.
Thank you very much for that. It's quite sobering when you see just how big the area of responsibility is, how wide-ranging and the scale of it. A hundred and fifty million pounds a year is a significant sum of money being turned over there. Before we take any questions, so no one's indicated what to ask questions yet, we can do that. Probably focus on sort of clarification of anything that the directors said so far because a lot will go into the work plan. And I noted that you prefigured about the discussion on the item on the rent recovery policy and the importance of that. So we'll come on to that. Just before we go into questions, I just wonder whether there's anything to add from either the executive director or the director of direct services.
Yeah, thanks very much. Nothing really particular to add, but I think just echo the comments that you've made that this is a significant service and it affects the lives of a lot of people in the city, both in the social housing sector, in the private sector and in the owner of the sector. And the work that the service does is really important going forward and there's lots of challenges ahead as well. So I just want to echo the complexity of the work and the complexity of the work that lies in front of this committee over the course of the year.
Thank you very much. Yes, scale and complexity, yes. What is there to worry about? Right, okay. Tom, anything to add? You may or may not.
Nothing really substantive other than probably just to say, you know, clearly the repairs and maintenance service is a key component in terms of this whole sort of management of housing stock across the city. You know, I've been here for, I'm on week four, I think. You know, clearly there is a lot of work to do within that service. I would fully acknowledge that. We need to get better, we need to get pace behind some of the backlog works that need to take place. But there are some shoots of recovery within that service. And as we go forward in this committee, hopefully we, you know, we'll be able to talk through some of that. But probably just to say, repairs and maintenance is part of my responsibilities. But actually, right this minute, it is absolutely top of my list in terms of the work we need to do to support Janet and her team to really improve the situation in terms of housing stock across the city.
Thank you. Yes, it's clearly a priority for everyone here. Right, so go off to questions. So start with councillor Fox.
Thank you. I'd just like you to explain something for me. It said on the new homes build, no, first of all, the private housing build, one billion to tackle category one hazards and poor standards. I just wondered if you could explain that a bit further, please.
Yeah, so one of the things that we do is we periodically do something called a private sector housing stock condition survey. And what we do is look at areas in the city where we know that there are significant issues. And when my officers go in and check properties, then one of the things we do is we categorise them in obviously hazards in a home that needs to be addressed with landlords, obviously, or owner occupiers. So what we have estimated through a combination of the stock condition survey work, through the information that we get from the building research establishment, the B R E, and the government and together with the information from the private sector housing is the level of investment that needs to take place in private sector homes. Now, one of the things that we will enforce on is non-compliance with category one hazards.
Thank you. It just scared me because I thought we've got to find that money.
And I think, you know, one of the things is that, you know, for many homeowners or particularly people, private landlords, you know, there seems to be little investment available for them. But they do have responsibilities to making sure, particularly if they're renting those property, there are legal landlord responsibilities that they must abide with in the same way as the social housing sector must do as well. Absolutely, and they're getting the rent as well and getting an income. And sometimes that's quite significant.
Yeah. The new homes build, you know, it's good that we've got this ongoing. Could you just clarify the right to buy on them? Because, you know, my theory is we're increasing the stock and then it's decreasing because we've got a right to buy programme.
Yeah, this is a challenge. It's also a challenge for a hundred and seventy other local authorities as well in the country. So what we've built through the stock increase programme is a balanced programme. So we have a mixture of specialist homes and also general needs. Now, so the specialist homes are exempt from right to buy. So we are confident that we are building those homes to a really good standard and also to make sure that they're not subject to right to buy. But the general needs homes are subject to right to buy. Now, one of the things that we do have is something that's called like a cost floor, a protection for the first fifteen years. So if a right to buy application comes in, you know, we get what is an appropriate value for that property. But obviously, as after that period, normally round about fifteen years, then obviously if a right to buy application like comes in, then we are due to bound to sell that property as long as no fraud is taking place with regard to that application.
Thank you.
Now, one of the things that we do is we're losing round about three hundred properties a year through right to buy. And we're trying to increase the supply by a similar number. And that is a major challenge and that's been subject of many conversations directly with government.
But so can I just clarify on that? So just to be clear, somebody could buy a brand new house, then in six months buy it.
Well, they could, but they would have to pay market price.
Right.
And once the protection, generally over a fifteen-year period, is then their discounts come through. But the problem comes is at that point, you know, it's whatever our outstanding debt is on that property in general. And also the money that we would get in would not be sufficient to build a new home. Now, it'll be different in different parts of the country, so more down times where values are higher. You know, it's, you know, they probably, you know, will be in a better position. But where you've got low-value areas, and some of our areas in Sheffield are low-value, that will make it more difficult to replace those homes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, good points are raised there, you know, so thanks for that. And we should bear that in mind when we're talking about things like the stock increase programme over the course of the year. And I'm glad you highlighted that figure of a billion pounds was needed for private sector investment. Because I highlighted that, it's quite a shocking figure, isn't it? When you realise that and just reinforces the issue of the scale of things. Okay. Councillor Abey.
Thank you, Douglas. Firstly, thank you, Janet, for that presentation. Just to echo what Denise was saying, is worrying with the new right to buy. It says here by twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, there will be three thousand one hundred new homes. Would that factor in the loss of homes or only record the gain, just new homes, or would that balance out?
No, it's not net. It's, we're losing stock and we're building or acquiring it back. And that is to keep pace. You know, I have never seen the demand for social housing that we have now. We have lots of people who are very vulnerable in a tenure that doesn't meet their needs and doesn't give them the security that they need sometimes. So if we weren't increasing the stock, what we would be seeing is year-on-year reductions. And what we are finding is that as the stock is shrinking and demand is increasing, we cannot meet, we cannot meet the needs of people. And that's why we're working closely with really good landlords, with registered providers to be able to do the best that can be done, to be able to meet those needs. But this is why we've got, you know, we've got significant demands for emergency accommodation, temporary accommodation. And also we can't always provide a home in the areas where people need them. You know, families for school or support services that's available. So this is why we are bringing forward a new housing strategy. Because I think it is about looking at how we can meet future housing need and ambition in the city and make sure that what is being built, you know, by either ourselves, registered providers or the private sector is addressing those gaps, is that gaps in provision across the city, across all tenures.
Thank you. Question, okay? All right. Put your mic off. Right, again councillor Baker.
Thanks, Janet, for a very comprehensive report. It just shows how broad a committee this is and how many different issues we're going to have to deal with over the months and years. I'm really pleased Tom is here because as we've indicated, housing repairs is the top of everybody's agenda. Because if the home you have isn't safe and warm, then it's not a home, it's out. So we've got a lot of work to achieve that and it's good to see that that's the item on the next committee meeting, which we can go into with some great detail there. I don't think everybody always realises just how much input we have into the private sector and how many partners we've got out there and how hard it is to balance these things. And the new legislation, every time it comes in, everything moves on. So a percentage of that money that comes in as part of the budget has to be spent on adaptation of that type. But it's really good to have a really all-round report, which is obviously fed into our work programme, which we're going to discuss shortly. Thank you very much for it. Thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you councillor Baker. I think it's probably time to move on to the work plan next. So I'm going to say thanks for that presentation, all the officers here. I think as a committee, all we need to do is just note that presentation. It's not a decision-making. Is everyone agreed on that?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, okay. In that case, let's move on to the work programme. So we're on, I think, page thirty-nine of the agenda. We've got quite a large table of things there for the course of the year. And I think for this item, we're going to have Alice Nicholson present an outline of the approach to work programming. And then we'll presumably fill in with the director of housing about the detail of that. Alice, shall I hand over to you?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, so this is your report, which is about your work programme as a committee. There are three recommendations actually on page thirty-eight, which are as you expect in terms of agreeing the work programme. Are there any additions or adjustments? And then you may consider further issues that you want to be explored for inclusion in the work programme. I suppose I'm obviously going to have to draw your attention to kind of page thirty-eight as well, prioritisation. As you know, there's a limited amount of these committees each year. There is a lot of work to be done and this is now all about your decisions as well as any pre kind of policy development work that you might need to do as a committee. You might be interested, just a couple of things in the report around, there's a table with some training induction programme that's being set up for you and you'll be sort of contacting aware of all that separately. That's page thirty-nine. These reports were written a while ago, the template. So actually, you've already heard the two public questions that have come in and the petition. I think what's going to be crucial, if you look at page six, that's, sorry, not page six, page forty, section six, that's setting out how you're going to need to kind of identify a topic, what you're going to need to know about it. And then how you decide as a committee that it should be included in your work programme. I think if I don't say it, Dave Hollis will probably say it. What you need to be wary of is that you've got a full programme. It is yours, it is the committee's programme, this will carry on, you know, it's a living document like they've always been. But if there are other issues that you want to include in the work programme, you might have to take some tough decisions about what goes from the work programme. Understandably, of course, the decisions are what you're here for and they're important that they are there. And they're there and you're supported by the officers in coming to those decisions. So I think as the Chair has pointed out, that from page forty-three onwards, you have got what is the work programme that's been put together where it should show everything that everyone knows at this point in time needs a decision on or needs some pre-work on it. It's set out, you'll see that actually as time goes on, your agendas are getting a bit longer and longer. And there are columns in there to help you understand what type of item it is. And there are sort of two areas that I think you need to think about as members is, when an issue comes forward or an item for a decision comes forward, what is the amount of pre-work that you want to do? Because even with decisions, you may wish to engage with your colleagues and you may wish to engage with members of the public too or interested groups. So I think that's something about when you're working through the work programme, is it given consideration to that? But in terms of this actual report, yes, you've got three recommendations on page thirty-eight. It is about agreeing that work programme for now. And it is also about considering whether there's anything that you're aware of. And I'm pretty sure that the Chair has something, so I'm going to hand over to the Chair to indicate that there is something to consider as an additional item now.
Right, thank you for that introduction. As you will see from the table, I mean, there is a lot coming on there. And I mean, it would probably be helpful if we as a committee look through what's proposed for the next meeting, which is in September. Even though that's three months away because of the summer, there is a lot on there and we will need to do some careful discussions beforehand, but it might be worth looking ahead to those. The item that Alice referred to was an item that came up at the Strategy and Resources Committee last week, last week, this week, recently? And was an issue that is one for political judgment of, and it's quite a serious one. And the request there was that in order to address the cost of living crisis, yeah, both in the short and the medium and long term, that we look at the cost of energy, that's into the issues about retrofitting and increasing the energy efficiency of our homes at scale to benefit as many tenants as possible. And there is a question therefore about the extent to which we prioritise that above, say, stock increase. You know, those are both areas where we have substantial sums of money budgeted for really big pieces of work. But the request from Strategy and Resources Committee is that we do look at at the issue of retrofitting for the cost of living crisis. And I give a commitment that I would bring that to this committee and ask that it's considered for the work plan. In terms of taking that forward, I don't see it as a separate piece of work because we do have both the stock increase programme and the approach to retrofitting on our work plan in items over the course of the year. Obviously, neither of those is a quick job. So I'm going to suggest we bring it in there. But I want to report that back because it was a specific request that was endorsed by the Strategy and Resources Committee as a whole. So I'm just going to leave that there. Subject only questions from the committee. Uh, we just need to work through where we are with the, um, the, the programme. I, I don't think Alice said this, I mean, it seems to me that the work programme we have in front of us um, starts off with describing the, the June meeting, which is where we are now, that matches what we have on our agenda. Moves on to the September meeting where there are a good dozen items, or more than, uh, many of which may need, you know, substantial discussion there. Uh, similarly in November. And then going on to, so I'm meeting four, fives and six, that dates to be confirmed further in the future, but still within this year, there's still a lot of work to be done. And I just wanna reflect on the fact that each single line in this work, in this work plan, um, which is one item for our agendas, is actually the culmination in many cases of a huge amount of officer work, um, and, uh, pre-preparation even for this committee. Um, so these are all big items. And we are going to have to think about how we deal with that, given my remarks earlier on about the fact that as a committee, we now have to take responsibility for this stuff. So I'm wondering if we can, um, have got any comments from the committee about, and really focus on things we'd like to see on the work plan. Um, and conversely, anything that could possibly come off it. So, um, but I'll go to councillor Fox, who's indicated.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you mentioned retrofitting. I, I for one don't know anything about that. So if, are you proposing that that comes to the next committee? If you do, I think we need to, uh, get some briefings on that, please.
I think it's a good point. Um, right, can anyone help me? Where, where are we with retrofitting on the work plan? Oh, it is actually the next meeting, isn't it? So it's the net zero roadmap for existing public and private homes. So that is the, the big item on, in September's meeting. So I think, um, you've actually got to the nub of where we are. So in order for us to deal with this on the work plan, we as a committee need to be prepared. And I indicated last year that, um, the, um, the committee I sat on then, which I don't think anyone here was part of, yeah, went through quite a bit of, um, briefings on this. But yeah, we need to bring people up to speed. Can I hand over to the director to comment on that?
Yes, certainly. There, there are a number of items here that probably would benefit from, um, from, from a, a pre-briefing, you know, in terms of, you know, so that we're all up to speed in terms of exactly where, where we are on some of these agenda items. One of the things that we have provisionally put in diary is a fortnightly meeting. So we can do some of that. Um, you know, bring, so we're all up to speed because lots of this is fast moving for us as well as officers. Um, so I think we, we're aiming to get those dates in the diary. Probably there every fortnight where we can probably work through those issues. And that might also help, um, you know, when we're bringing forward reports for approval. I think they're called knowledge briefings in, in the new structure.
Right, okay, no- knowledge briefings, that's gonna be the, the new phrase, isn't it? Well, actually, knowledge is good and briefings are good. So, uh, and so yes, I guess if we're talking about a fortnightly pattern of briefings, um, and it will be a real opportunity because we have got the, the summer where, you know, I think we have to accept that not everyone will be here for all the briefings. Um, that's what summer is, but we, we don't have formal committee meetings then. And we're going to have to work out a programme of that. Um, in terms of taking this forward, I mean, I think councillor Fox, you've highlighted a particular issue that we do need to have briefings on, so I, I guess Janet will take that away, um, as if it wasn't in hand already. With other things, um, I, I, we can flag up issues that we want particular priority to be given to now for briefings. But equally, I think as a committee, um, we need to find a way of working so that we, um, can do that and we can flag up things. Because I think they will occur to you over the course of the next few months. Um, so I, I suppose I'll just, what I offer to anyone on the committee can contact me as Chair to say, actually, I think we should have a briefing in this area. And, um, it'll be my job along with the others to coordinate that. So, um, so I'm just putting that offer out there. Um, so that, that one you've highlighted, thank you for that. Um, is, is anyone else who wants to flag up anything specific that should be on the, uh, work plan? Councillor Thornton?
Um, um, thank you very much for your presentation Janet. Um, I've got a couple of things that could be flagged up to be part of the work plan, but I'm happy to be guided by the rest of the committee. Um, on, obviously, housing repairs is a huge priority of mine, as it is a huge priority of yours. Um, looking at, for example, when people haven't had their repairs done in time or not to sometimes a satisfactory standard. Um, people do have the right to go to an external contractor at times, but not many people actually know that or are aware of that. Um, how can we, is that something that we want to encourage? Or how do we expand that to make sure that people get to proper accredited external contractors where they, you know, where they do actually seek that information? Um, so some sort of work around that to make sure that that's actually clarified. Um, on the other side of the spectrum with private sector, um, looking at, for example, like what Emily, Emily's question, um, and we said about the, um, stock review that you do and annual surveys, et cetera, um, for students. I think, having lived a lot of my life in rental accommodation and sometimes good quality rental accommodation, sometimes very bad quality rental accommodation, um, would it not be worth trying to expand that? Because as far as I'm concerned, like you can review your takeaway, your taxi. Your landlord can review you, but you cannot technically officially review your landlord. That doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And is that not something, particularly if we go towards more selective licensing programmes going forward? That that could be a very key part of that to make sure that tenants have a better voice? Is that something that we'd be willing to look into, I don't know?
Yeah, uh, uh, thanks, um. I perhaps asked Janet to come in on that.
Yeah, so, so absolutely. I think, I think that would be an ideal committee opportunity, both for, for discussion and obviously for, for someone's. Some of the things that we don't, we, it's, we don't just introduce selective licensing. We've also been looking at, at sort of letting agents. And we've also been looking at accreditation. And on the steward of properties, we've got over twenty thousand people on accredited scheme. Uh, but that's obviously, oh, you know, less than half of all our private rented homes in the city. We are keen on, on sort of accreditation. And we are keen of utilising all of our tools and powers that we have. And sometimes we introduce banning orders, sometimes we will, we will levy civil penalties to protect people living in poor quality private rented accommodation. So it, it'd be worthwhile probably looking at the full range of interventions that we take in the city. And also probably some recommendations of the standards we want to set and the tools we want to use more than we are doing now going forward.
Uh, so just to, to bring that in, I was thinking about how to, how to bring that in. So in terms of private sector, I mean, there's such a wide range of, uh, things that go on there. Um, as Chair and Deputy Chair and probably as Paul to a spokesperson. Um, try. Uh, I'm sorry, well, maybe, yes, well, yeah, whoever, whoever the spokesperson is, that's, that's fine. Um, we'll try and arrange a briefing for ourselves with, um, the, the head of private sector. Um, and then see how we can sort of form it into a useful briefings for the whole committee, I think. Uh, because I think it's an important thing. And then see, because it, it comes, it goes into a number of items on the work plan, I think, over the course of the year. Uh, and then your other one, which is, um, uh, that's a, a less usual one, but a, a good point. The tenants' right to engage external contractors in certain circumstances. I wonder, given that the housing repairs issue is gonna be on the agenda for September, and that's something we all wanted, I wonder, Tom, whether we could just take on councillor Thornton's point there about that, you know, the less common aspect. And, uh, and you could perhaps address that when we come back in September. That would be helpful anyway. Um, okay, all right. Councillor Curran?
Uh, thank you Chair. It's sort of building off on that. Um, so obviously housing repairs is a massive issue that we need to get to grips of. Um, at the moment, we get more or less a monthly update about the, the state of outstanding repairs because councillor Thornton asks it at full council, uh, and we get a written answer. Um, personally, I don't, I don't think that's enough, given that we are the committee with responsibility for overseeing it. So it's not an item for the work, uh, programme as such. But I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had a weekly, if that's not too often, update on the numbers, which I think should give us as a committee comfort to see it coming down. Um, and to also give officers a message that this is really important to us. And an, an extra push to, to get them to, to do what they can, that extra mile to, to drive it down. Because it's, even though it's come down quite a long way, it's still unacceptably high. There's still people that have been waiting an awful long time, um, for what was quite often some, some fairly straightforward repairs on the face of it.
Right, um, tha- thank you. Um, good suggestion there councillor Curran. And I wonder if we can take that, I think, Tom, you want, want to come in there. But, uh, just in terms of the committee and the work plans, it seems that's a good example of a, a way that we could possibly have a flow of information to the committee to inform us, possibly without formal briefings, which take up our time, taking outside the committee meetings. Um, and have that, bearing in mind it's also imposing extra work on officers. So we wanna make sure that it can be done, um, fairly easily, which I hope it can be. Um, Tom?
Yeah, just to say absolutely, we can, we can, we can look at what's possible in that. What might be, you know, I think, uh, is really useful Chair in terms of these, uh, what's the information we can provide between committees, like you say, to, to answer the questions that you all then have at committees? Because we want, we've, we've got limited time here and we wanna make sure we're focused on the, you know, the right things. So really, really happy to look at what we can do in that. It might be worthwhile if we can maybe outside of this meeting, just to have a good, quick discussion informally about what might be in that report. Because clearly there's a whole range of, of measures and data we can provide. And providing that on a weekly basis might become a bit onerous, but clearly we have lots, lots of information within the service. So it might be worth a bit of an informal conversation outside of this meeting. If that's okay, just to formulate what we, what we, what you, we want to give you. And then clearly we can look at giving you that on a regular basis.
Uh, thank you. I think we should take on that offer of, um, just working that out. But just, just my view will be something that's easy to, and quick to produce from the officer's point of view. Um, gives us, um, be some short bullet points, but something that will track progress. So if we, if we are having it weekly, then something that's a comparison. So we can get a, a picture of a week on week change. So that we ourselves know whether things are going roughly in the right direction, even though there's somewhere to go, or they're actually going the wrong direction, or they're up and down. Um, but I think once we have that, it means that by September, if we've had a few weeks of that, and we will be in a better position ourselves just to understand a bit more of that. So I think it's a good suggestion. So, uh, shall we take this up afterwards, um, to work out the precise details? Maybe you can suggest something that you could, um, prepare and produce at, you know, minimal officer cost, and then we'll see if that suits us. Right, okay, yes. Uh, I'll bring councillor Auckland, yes. Were you? All right, okay. Um, do you, do you want to follow on there?
Yeah, I think, uh, one of the things that we're, just to give you some reassurance councillor, is that I've asked for more regular meetings of the repairs and scene leadership team to be able to look at those, uh, repairs backlog, backlog and the wider issues that this, uh, committee and previous committees before that have been wrestling with. So we will be able to provide that. Um, but I think we need to be satisfied ourselves that we've got the information in a, in a good place, that is going to be useful to, to provide and, and meaningful with some context. So if it allows to, a bit of time to be able to get that together, that would be, that'd be really helpful for us. Because giving you weekly information, uh, hard data isn't necessarily gonna be helpful because that is ebb and flows in terms of, in the, uh, the work programme, work that the teams do. So I'd like to have a bit of time to be able to do that. But reassure you that we're setting up appropriate governance arrangements to improve that going forward.
Thank you. I, I think we can take the reassurance that repairs is an issue that is significant, is being addressed and that people are on the case with it. Uh, so we'll, we'll come back to that with interest. Good, okay. Um, councillor Auckland?
Yeah, thank you Chair. And thank you Janet for the presentation earlier. I was trying to come in on exactly this repairs issue. And it's just a small point and I, I don't want to go into the minutiae of it all. But I mean councillor Curran raises a good point about having regular updates. But part of the issue for tenants and tenant satisfaction are what have been very long delays in actually trying to get through to the service in order to register the fact that they've got a re- they've got a repair that i- is, needs urgent attention. So, um, I think there was a reply in one of the questions that last cancelled, which said that those waiting times to get through were actually coming down and steps were being taken. I think if any information is gonna be supplied to this committee about outstanding repairs, it would be really helpful if something a- around telephone waiting times responses could be included. Again, it's not about adding a lot of work to something. I'm sure if, it, it can just be drawn out of some sort of computer programme or something. But I think that's really important because it's tenants are unhappy about delays, but they're very unhappy about the delays in actually trying to get through to the service. And I get emails saying, I can't contact anybody, what can you do about this? And then I'm sending off emails to Janet sometimes, um, and to Paul. So I, I, I just think that's part and parcel of it. But I just wonder if anything can be done about that, please?
Yeah, that, thank you.
Yeah. If, if I could just think, when we bring forward the performance report in September, it will also include the contact centre performance. And also one of the things that, that you will have seen is that we're replacing our IT system. Um, and repairs have alre- already done some, some improvements to that, to their IT system. One of the things that we don't have, we, we don't have a robust sort of online offer where, where customers can, can, you know, access, make appointments, actually check the things. So, so everything is sort of bottlenecking in through to the contact centre. And that's no excuse for the delays that people, um, are receiving. So, so one of the things we're also doing is looking at different ways. So, you know, so introduction of sort of like texting, introduction of so that people can access, access the service in a different way. There is also a customer services review that is also on with at the moment. Looking at the customer access points, looking at the, uh, the contact centre. Um, and also other ways that people can, can communicate, including having obviously, uh, my neighbourhood offices contact details so that somebody who they can ring, um, if they've got any specific issues. So, but one of the things that we will do as part of that performance report will also include in the contact centre performance call times and things like that and the report that we bring forward. Uh, thank you Janet, that's really reassuring. I thank you.
Thank you, okay. Uh, so just on, on the work plan and the re- looking for the committee about the volume of, um, stuff coming through. Um, we have got provisionally a lot of things on the agenda for September. So, uh, and most of which, well, many of which are marked as needing a decision. Uh, some are described as policy development. Um, we are gonna have to think about how to manage those. Now, maybe that's a function for some of the pre-meetings, um, that we will do. Do, I mean, I just wonder if anyone's got any comments on, um, taking this forward? We, we could just, um, leave it as it is, deal with it in the pre-meetings and so on. But I, I do think as a committee, we'll probably want to flag up, um, in advance of the committee meeting. Um, which of these are likely to want some, um, discussion or political debate? And which are ones where we can, you know, where we have to make a decision, but can expect to push it through as a, as a formal approval? Um, so it may just be that, um, we have to do some work to canvass the views of committee members in advance of the next committee meeting. But I just wanted to just leave that there. Again, it's thinking about how we're gonna work as a committee and, you know, how we get the things that we all want to take place.
Right Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I think it's absolutely right to pick up the pre-agenda meetings. That, that's a core role of those, um, to try and understand what's happening with your agenda, your next agenda and your future agendas. Uh, so I think that's definitely a role for yourself, um, and the deputy and the, the spokesperson.
Yeah.
And that is about, yeah, doing that work, checking in with your groups and coming back at that point so you can have that conversation. Because they're, they are quite lengthy agendas.
Yes, yes.
Um, but that's not to say it's not, nothing is important. It's gonna be very difficult to perhaps not take something.
Okay. So I think we're coming around to saying that despite the fact that the next meeting agenda looks very daunting, we should perhaps leave it as it is for now. Um, and the work to be done is in streamlining that, in organising the briefings, the flow of information, um, over the course of summer. We have got some time in advance for that. Um, if so, I perhaps want to go to the recommendations. Um, so we had a useful discussion there. Just trying to find the recommendations, page thirty eight, weren't they, so? So essentially it's agreeing the work plan, but, um, the recommendations are, um, uh, will not consideration be given to any further additions or adjustments? Um, uh, and I think actually we, we have done that, so it's not something we need to resolve as such by this committee, is it? But point two is that the committee's work programme, programme as set out in appendix three be agreed. And I think that's the point we're at. And then point three is that consideration be given to any further issues to be explored by officers for inclusion in part six of the next work programme for, for potential additions to the work programme. So we have of course, I mean, the, we've been around, the work programme is on each committee's, each meeting's agenda, and we will alter this as the year goes on. With those recommendations, I mean, I think we're really just saying it's recommendation two, isn't it? That is the only thing we need to formally decide, isn't it? Uh, and, and I think perhaps item three is simply asking officers to note the comments that have been made, um, in the course of this discussion. So would that be an appropriate resolution? So that the committee's work programme as set out in appendix three be agreed? So that the committee's work programme, as set out in Appendix Three, be agreed, and that the issues raised in the discussion today be noted by officers with a view to informing the work programme. Is that a suitable form of words? And is everyone agreed with that?
Happy with that?
Yep.
Everybody happy with that?
Chair, you might just need to check if there's any dissent to that.
Yes.
We have moved into a kind of less scrutiny environment and a more decision-making committee.
Yes, indeed, yes. Yeah, sure. So, yeah, I just want to see if we can agree those form of words there. And if there's any dissent to that. Yeah, okay.
Do we agree?
So unanimous, right. Let's show of hands. Yeah, thank you, everyone. Thanks. I think we can take that as unanimous. It is important, and it's perhaps, I'm just going to say, it's perhaps reassuring that all the issues that have been raised actually do fit into things that are broadly on the work plan, but they can now be polished a bit. So that's helpful. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so if we go into the next item, which is over, I think, to... It's yours, isn't it, Ryan? So we're on item eight, so the financial position. Right, page sixty-two. Thanks, Betty. Yeah. So page sixty-two is the key information relates to this committee, even though the report itself starts on page fifty-seven. I think I'm just going to hand it over to you, Ryan, as Director of Finance and Commercial Services. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair. Conscious of the committee's time, so I'll go through this fairly quickly. The council's in a very challenging financial position. That applies to the general fund revenue budget, which this report focuses on really. And the top and tail of the report are the same that every committee will get. That is the report that Strategy and Resources also received last week. So I'm very conscious that each committee and all councillors get exactly the same information at the relevant committee, with the relevant detail for their committee inserted into the middle of the report. So there's a section in there that is particular to this. What I'm going to say about the general fund actually applies equally to the housing revenue account. And the recommendations on this report around commissioning officers to do work to figure out how we can rectify the financial position apply to the general fund. For many committees, apply to the housing revenue account for this committee. And I note that there's an item on the September work programme to look at the HRA, the Housing Revenue Accounts Business Plan, which I think is a good opportunity for officers to respond to the position we're in. So a few things I just want to quickly draw your attention to. The general fund revenue budget outturn for last year was almost a £20 million overspend. That's pretty unprecedented for us. We've had to use reserves to fill that gap. We allocated last year 70 million of reserves in total to help us through our financial challenges and to give us some time and space to return sustainably to a balanced position. So we've already used 20 of those, that's 70. We used a further 15 in setting the general fund revenue budget for this financial year, 2223. And we've earmarked a further 25, so that takes you to about 60 total, to help us manage the risks associated with delivering a significant amount of savings in this financial year. We've, council agreed about 53 million, 52.7 million of savings for this financial year. There are going to be significant timing and deliverability risks associated with delivering those savings. Taking that much cost out of any organisation is very difficult to do. After 10 years or more of cash constraint at this authority, all the easy stuff, to the extent there ever was any easy stuff, has been done long ago. So we've got a job of work to do as an organisation this year to bring our costs back in line with our income. What we have done over the last number of years on a general fund basis is really prioritise those services that look after those people in our communities who are most vulnerable. There's a chart on one of the pages in the report that effectively shows how investment in social care has increased over time and investment in other services, which includes housing general fund services, which is a particular part relevant to this committee, have been squeezed over time to support social care. That's not because of any particularly large increase in the number of social care clients we're seeing. The biggest driver of that increase in cost is the cost of providing that care. Some of those costs regularly feature in the news these days. Some of you will have no doubt heard about the spiralling cost of children's social care. Adult social care is no different. As at month one for 2223, so this current financial year, we're looking at an 18.7 million pound forecast overspend for the full year. We would normally expect at a very early stage in the year to see an overspend. This is higher than I would normally expect to see. We'd normally see an overspend forecast, basically because some of the savings that we were intending to deliver are taking a little bit longer than we hoped they would. That is the case this year, but the numbers we're talking about are difficult for us to ignore, in fact, impossible for us to ignore. So all the committees who are seeing overspends have had the same recommendation, or will have the same recommendation put to them, that they commission officers to do the necessary work to bring that overspend back in line. And the Strategy and Resources Committee last week approved that position and has asked the finance subcommittee to monitor the development of those action plans and implementation against them. So on the housing committee, the particular bit that's relevant to you. The housing general fund is on budget. It's a relatively small part of this committee's business, but nonetheless important. So we've got a balanced position for housing general fund so far this year. It's not the same case for the housing revenue account. We're looking at something along the lines of 6.4 million pound overspend for the year so far. So just under 5% of the total. That manifests itself in the housing revenue account as a reduction in the contribution to capital expenditure. So that reduces the amount of money that we're able to reinvest in the service. It's a ring-fenced account. There's nowhere for underspends or overspends to go. It's legally ring-fenced. There's a set of statutorily prescribed debits and credits. It's effectively what housing revenue accounts is, as to what goes in it and what must come out of it. So any expenditure, overspends or income shortfalls, that's the issue here. Just result in a lesser ability to develop and maintain the council's housing stock. And that's what you see on the chart in section 1.4.2. So that's 6.4 million light. Why is it? We have more vacant properties than we would like. The report sets that out. So we were assuming in the business plan less than 2% vacant properties, which reflects a normal level of churn. And we're currently seeing that significantly higher than we expect it to be. And you've already touched with other officers on some of the underlying reasons for that in the way that the repairs service is getting itself back on its feet and some of the other challenges that the service has. So that's the major issue. An issue that's coming around the corner for the housing revenue account is inflation, as it is for everyone and every business in the country. There will be some significant pressures because of inflation on things like construction costs, energy costs, as they relate to the various tenant services that we provide as an authority. And that's something that this committee is really going to have to bear in mind. And I think we'll probably come back in September, Janet. It would be really helpful to talk about that to the committee as we think about the budget planning for next year and the rent setting that this committee will have to engage in throughout the autumn. And I suppose that leads me on to the budget process for 2324. Corporately, organisationally, we're not expecting any significant additional investment from government. If we do get it, it will be late, and frankly, too late for us to be of much use in a budget-setting process. Local government settlement announcements start for us really normally with the Autumn Statement, which the Chancellor would be expected to deliver in October at some point. That will then filter down to specific local authority settlement figures just before Christmas. It's not unusual for it to be just before Christmas. I think it's been in the Christmas week before in recent years. So that's far too late for us to make use of it for a budget-setting process. So this report also sets out a timetable that Strategy and Resources last week approved, which brings forward the budget process actually. And the first step in the general fund revenue budget process, and to a certain extent, and very great extent, the housing revenue account budget process, is actually at the Strategy and Resources Committee on the 5th of July. That committee will receive a report from me, setting out the medium-term financial position for the council. And will also propose some principles for setting committee, individual committee budget targets. For most committees, that's a significant event, if you like. For this committee, the real issue is how you manage the income from the housing revenue account against the expenditure that you wish to incur against it. So it's a slightly different process for this committee, albeit that there'll be a relatively small element of housing general fund, which makes a big difference actually to the people of Sheffield. So that budget timetable will require work to be done outside the formal committee meeting cycle over the course of the summer. And I'm sure that's the case with the housing revenue account as well as we get towards the housing business plan work that needs to be done in the autumn. And all this is really about making sure that we finish the budget process in good time. From a housing perspective, the Strategy and Resources Committee meeting on the 5th of December is as late as it can go. There's a requirement for us to set the rent for housing, which I believe is still a full council decision. And that's pencilled in for the full council meeting on the 1st of February. That is the latest that that can go. So it's an end-dated process. For the general fund, we've got a little bit longer, but not much frankly. It still needs to end at the Strategy and Resources on the 5th of December because that's the latest opportunity we've got. And that will head its way then to full council on the 1st of March for the annual council tax setting meeting, which I know many members and officers will be familiar with. So Chair, that's all I wanted to cover. I'm obviously happy to take any questions or comments that members would have.
Right, well, thank you very much for that. I think you've made it clear, if it wasn't clear before, that again, no one gets the summer off, do they? There's a lot of work to be done. And actually, yeah, it's reflecting one of the recommendations there. Council Baker?
Thanks, Chair. So I think you've told us very clearly, Ryan, that there's a lot of work to be done. But I think when we look at this, it also tells us another story as well. Is that one of the problems we've got here is vacant properties and the loss of £2 million in rent. I understand that the reason a lot of those properties haven't been there is because they need repairs, and some of them major repairs. But yet here, lower down, it suggests that we need to take £5 million out of the repair budget. So I know repair budget is on the agenda next time round. And I think we need a serious look at invest to save in a way. Because if these properties aren't in a legal condition, then we can't get the rent from them. And it's just going to go round and round and round in circles if we don't do something to stop that happening. So just to say through you, Chair, that I think it's something we really need to bottom out next time round. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I mean, we haven't conferred, but I've actually written "invest to save" down here. So, yeah, that's it. Janet?
Yes, certainly. As Ryan set out, there are a number of pressures on the HRA account. And lots of things, since we set the budgets, that have significantly changed. You know, inflation is much higher. You know, getting hold of materials is a problem, and obviously, construction work in general. It is that balance to make sure the capital programme is dealing with major investment in properties alongside the repairs service, otherwise that spikes the repairs costs. So what we're also seeing as well is a significant increase in disrepair cases at pretty unprecedented levels as well. So that, you know, so we're obviously working with Tom, obviously, to get the voids turned around. Because obviously, we're also then means that we've got too many people in emergency and temporary accommodation. So there is a number of things that that is triggering. One of the things that we are not saying is that we need to cut £5 million off the repairs. We need to work out what the repairs cost truly is. And I know Tom obviously recently joined us. He's having a really good look to see if that is the right figure that we're working with. And also, we need to make sure that repairs are not doing repairs time and time again. You know, we get into the heart of the problems and actually delivering repairs as quickly as they come. One of the things that we are suggesting, so we'll be doing two things in September. One is a review of this year's business plan and the budgets. So, you know, so making sure that obviously the business plan for 2223 has a plan. As Ryan says, we can't be working as a committee with a forecast overspend of some few million pounds. And I think taking money out of the capital programme will probably be something that will then obviously spike repairs even further. So I think it's looking at all of the areas of the business plan and also then obviously taking some in-year decisions, but then also looking to 2324. And the business plan also tends to look over a five-year period so that we make some decisions this year that might also create a betterment in future years as well. So we're going to bring that in September. And then, as Ryan has said, be looking from 2324 onwards. And we do that work over the summer so we can agree what the priorities are for the business plan. And then as officers, we can take those forward and implement those changes.
Thank you. I think for elected members, yeah, we can probably see a tension already in this, in the sense that if there's, you know, a finite number of people working on repairs, do we want them to go to do the repairs in houses where people are currently living in conditions of disrepair? Or do we want them to focus on the voids so that we can create effectively new houses, bring those online, but also address the cost issues? And that's going to be difficult. I just wonder if we can perhaps deal with that by asking perhaps Tom to note that and see if we can address that when we come back in September?
Yeah, absolutely, Chair. It's probably worth just adding again, we're doing the piece of work around the business plan and councillor Baker's right to, you know, reflect that circular economy really, in terms of this particular area of work in that, you know, we've had Covid and we were only doing emergency repairs for a period of time. And actually, that means that what we're now stepping into, repairs that were probably minor, are not minor necessarily anymore. So that's added weight onto the repairs service. But also that, you know, the investment piece will also ultimately drive down the cost of repairs. So that piece of work that I've got, you know, right at the top of my agenda is probably twofold, and we can bring it back to the committee, which is about how we prioritise workload actually within the repairs service. What is top of the list? And how do we work through all of that work to best effect for our tenants and for the city? But also that basic question about what does this service cost? Because being really honest about it at the moment, we are not in normal service delivery at the minute still because we are still dealing with the backlog from Covid and everything else. So that £5 million that's referred to is what, you know, we currently expect it might outturn at at the end of the year if we don't do something. But actually, it's not necessarily the ongoing, long-term cost of the service. It's still reflecting the current position.
Thank you very much. On that note, I think it's probably good to move to the recommendations on this. And so I'd just like everyone to focus on that. Partly so that I don't do all this ahead in this time. But I think we do need to propose to take the recommendations, you know, exactly as they're set out here. And I think it's just helpful to look through these because it should really focus our minds there. And I'm sure you've read this already, but... So recommendations on page 55. One, note the council's challenging financial position and the month-one position. So thank you to Ryan for that. Two, note the budget timetable set out in this report, including requirement for committee to plan to develop budget proposals over the course of the summer. Three, note that the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee was recommended at its 31st of May meeting to require any policy committee that's forecasting overspend on their budget to develop an action plan to address the overspend in year. And as the finance subcommittee to monitor both the development of any required action plans and delivery against them. And then four, commission work from officers to develop and implement plans to mitigate the overspend in the housing revenue account and deliver stalled savings plans to bring forecast out and back in line with budget. In effect, that's what we've been talking about. And that's put into four neat recommendations there. So just looking around the room, I just want to ask if everyone is happy to agree to that? Any dissent? Yeah, not dissenting? No, right, any dissent? I think that is unanimous. Thank you very much. We've got through that. Thank you, Ryan, for presenting that. And, yeah, I think we've got a direction of travel. Great, okay. So I think we can crack on to, this is the last item, isn't it? On the rent recovery. So we're on to actual substantive decision-making here. Janet, are you going to introduce this one?
Yeah, yes, certainly. Yeah, yes certainly, I would like to introduce the, this report, and this is obviously to update the rent arrears recovery policy. And what I'd also like to do is, is introduce the committee to Dean Pika, Dean Pika manages our income management and financial inclusion team, and also will be able to explain all of the support that takes place with tenants before we embark on formal recovery action. And I think that's, that's important, that this is obviously alongside preventing people from being in arrears from the start, and actually what support goes in place. So we should really be reviewing our policy every two to three years to make sure it's up to date, it's current, and obviously it reflects the needs of the council, and also makes it absolutely like clear with tenants living in council properties what our processes are in terms of rent collection, and what happens if rent is, is not paid. And also the support that the council will put in place, which, you know, through Dean's team, you know, and also the work that Dean and the team do alongside the council's Revenue and Benefits Services, DWP and other agencies as, as well. So in terms of the, of the updating of the policy, the, the last policy was, was approved, we believe, in October 2001, and we've probably done some amendments, but actually we haven't formally agreed a new policy, and that's something that we want to change and bring some robustness into reviewing on regular interviews the policy, so it is up to date. And as part of the policy review, there has been some consultation that's carried out, and details of that are included in the report, and the feedback, and some of those changes have been included in, in the draft policy and recommendations. And obviously recommending to committee approval of those changes, which I think will, will be, enable us to be really much clearer on our policy, much clearer on tenants, and things that we need to do to help tenants, and, and also to make sure that they understand, you know, their responsibilities as well as that, the, the Housing Neighbourhood Services responsibilities into providing good quality information at regular interviews so people know where they are. So, so I'll hand over to Dean, and I think it would be helpful for Dean to also, you know, just quickly go through, you know, the, the all the support that is in place for our tenants, and I do think that council tenants, you know, really do benefit from a lot of support to try and avoid arrears in the first place, and also to try and help people be able to, to manage their household costs. Thank you.
Like, just before Dean comes in, I think I'd just like to say thanks for the way that this is laid out, so starting at page nine on the second pack of papers, where's the draft revised recovery policy, it's very helpful to have the specific changes laid out clearly in red, so we can see what they are and why, so just that really does help us.
Yeah, thank you Janet, I think just to, just to clarify and to reiterate, the policy and the approach of the income management team when collecting rent from people is around support and is around prevention. We have lots of vulnerable tenants, a lot of people need help with the finances, not just with the rent arrears, but with the finances generally, and that's our, that's our general approach, we will all call is to try and provide that support wherever we possibly can, but we will move into robust action for those people that decide not to pay. Some of the areas of support that we will provide routinely to council tenants are that we will try and get in early, we have I, we have IT systems that identify people that are struggling to pay their rent very early, we'll make, we'll make contacts, we'll make arrangements with people, so we don't, we don't ask them to repay all of their debts straight away if they can't afford to do so, we'll make arrangements, we'll give basic budgeting advice to people, we'll, we'll look at income and expenditure, we'll look at where they are spending money, and give basic advice around if, if we think they're spending a lot of money on certain areas that, that they can potentially reduce, we'll maximise their income, we'll give them benefit advice and we'll help them to claim benefits where appropriate, we'll work with support agencies, we refer people on if people've got specific vulnerabilities, whether that's mental health, or whether that's addictions to substances, or whether, whatever the support may be, they're just two of the examples there. So we help people to access other, other pots of money directly, so discretionary housing payments, we will fill out forms for people and help them to claim that, people, the vast majority of council tenants pay their water with their rent, they're covered by Yorkshire Water, we, they've got a water support scheme, but we, we're a trusted partner with Yorkshire Water, so we can, we can gain Yorkshire Water support for people, we act, we direct people to the Household Support Fund, we help people claim LAS, we help people to claim council tax support, council tax hardship, and we also provide from the HRA hardship fund annually as well, which we, which we support, and that really helps people who are facing legal actions to avoid, to avoid that action being taken, to help them to sustain the tenancy. We work closely with partners like the Citizens Advice, we fund a dedicated independent debt workers of those tenants with the most serious financial problems, we can, we can direct the Citizens Advice, and they provide them with that independence advice. We have a great relationship with Credit Union, if people are struggling to budget, we fund there's a small charge for a budgeting account with the Credit Union, we will fund that so the customers or tenants can have their salary or the Universal Credit paid directly to the Credit Union, and that then pays the rent directly at no charge to the, to the tenant. We target resources to particular groups of vulnerable customers, whether that's people in our sheltered accommodations, elderly people, people who are in interim accommodation, temporary accommodation, travellers, new tenants moving into tenants' tenants' for the first time, we give direct and intensive support to those, to those people to understand the implications of affording a tenancy. You know, and throughout the process, I mean, this is the recovery policy, there's a detailed procedure that sits below this, so that my staff understand what to do and how to manage accounts, and within there, there's a number of different mechanisms and tools around support and intervention, whether that's around managers who need to authorise anything, you know, any court application, any warrant application, that has to be scrutinised and quality checked and authorised. We even have steps now, we work with the county court, and we do pre-legal interviews for people who are facing legal action, again, as a final, you know, opportunity really to try and avoid that action being taken. So we are about prevention and support, we do so much of it, but we will also try and be robust and are robust with those tenants that decide not to pay, but we feel can pay, but don't engage, and that's where we do, we will end up taking recovery actions. Just before Covid, we had the lowest level of legal recovery actions in the last 25 years, and that reflects the supportive and preventative work that we do, and all the work that tries to avoid people getting to those stages eventually. So that's a big, quick summary of our support, happy to answer any questions if anybody's got any.
Thanks very much for that, so first of all, just to look around, see if anyone's got any questions about what's proposed in those changes, or if we're broadly supportive. Ben?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thanks for the explanation about what happens before that, I, I think that's very helpful. In, in, in terms of a question though, obviously, the procedures put in place in, in what is becoming a more difficult context for people with the cost of living crisis, we expect more people to be struggling to pay their bills, more people going through that, that sort of process, and we're looking at increasing the sort of frequency of, of which we sort of check their rent balances, et cetera. Are we adequately staffed to do that, given the, an expectation of a increasing workload, at least over the, the short run?
I think, I, I think any manager would love to say if it liked more staff, undoubtedly, but I think what we have to, we understand the financial positions, and I think what we're trying to do is work as efficiently as we can. So we have invested to save recently, with, for example, with IT, which identifies those accounts that are the highest risk for us, and we had, and we have a, a weekly programme of monitoring rent accounts, so we don't, we try not to leave it more than a week, so we will check every account that needs identifying on a weekly basis, and that, those, those accounts are provided to us by the, the systems that we use, so we will identify somebody that hasn't paid. The, the first indicator is somebody who misses two weeks' rent, so if somebody misses two weeks' rent, we will then be trying to contact them via a number of different means, we're trying to automate the process to, to use more, to use text messaging for example, because lots of people like that, it's quick, it's easy, it's cheap, we do have the standard letters, we will obviously visit people, we're always, you know, we, we deal with tens of thousands of telephone calls every year, so we are constantly trying to be on top of rent accounts and to manage them as best we can. The concern obviously with the cost of living crisis is that more and more people may struggle to pay, and numbers aren't particularly showing that right now. I do feel, I feel personally that there will be, as we get towards autumn and winter, I think we'll see a real impact there, I'm not saying that not, there's not impacts now because there clearly is, but I think a lot of the impacts may come later when people start to put the heating back on, and I think what I, what we've talked about is agreeing with members some kind of strategy really, because we are going to have a position where some people are saying to us, I haven't paid my rent because I have put food on the table for my kids, or I've paid my gas bill, that's a difficult position for us, in that it might hit our criteria, we've gone through all our support, and we might be in a position where we may be considering legal action, but we, we want to be in a position where we're agreed in Sheffield on what we do in that, in those circumstances. So I would, I'd always, I've never turned down additional staff, but I understand the position we're in, I think we're just, we can just about manage at the moment. We've also got the, the ongoing rollout of Universal Credit, which we have, which creates an additional resource requirement, because people moving on to Universal Credit generally need time to understand how that, not everybody, but a lot of people need time to understand how to budget, how they're going to manage, how they're going to manage that five-week gap at the beginning, so we put a lot of resource into that. The numbers moving on to UC has kind of levelled out in the last 12 to 18 months since Covid impacted the first six months, but the DWP have announced the, the move to UC, so everybody who's still of working age on housing benefit will move to Universal Credit over the next two years. When that impacts on Sheffield, we don't know, but that will have a huge impact, because we've got another 8,000 tenants still working age on HB, but we'll move to Universal Credit, so that will be another impact on resources. So we try and be as efficient as we can, and we're managing at this moment.
Thank you very much, yeah, okay. Council Baker.
Thanks Chair, and thanks Dean, and thanks for what your staff do, because I know they make a difference. But people who pay monthly, even by standing order, sometimes get picked up if they were, if they pay two weeks' arrears and two weeks in front, as it sometimes has slipped into. How do you deal with that?
People who pay regularly, monthly, who pay to the amount that we've agreed with them, should not get, should not be identified by our arrears system, because we, we have an expectation that they're paying monthly. So the system that we use identifies monthly payers. Anybody who signs up to direct debit now or pays for standing order on a monthly basis, we want them to pay in front, we want them to pay a month in advance, but we understand that's not always easy for people. So we do have people that are on different cycles, some people are paying behind with their rent, but they will pay, usually pay a little bit extra, so that over time, they will get into a position where they're paying in front, but we won't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even contemplate taking any recovery action against those people if they're paying as we've agreed to do. They may be in arrears, but over time, if they pay a little bit extra, they will get into a position where they're not, where they're paying in front, and that's, that's our approach generally.
And, and people who, who go slightly in arrears, you still encourage them to pay the December, the free month, so that they can catch up that way?
We do, so monthly payers, direct debit is a condition of tenancy now, so most, we're, we're up to nearly 50%, so nearly half of all our tenants pay their rent by direct debit. If you pay monthly by direct debit, you pay 12 equal instalments, so your December instalment is the same as your others. If you pay weekly, we can actually give you, you can have to have rent three weeks at Christmas, it's a system thing, it's not great, but that's, that's the choices on the direct debit options that you've got. But the people that do pay monthly, we would, we would, we would normally pay the same through December as we have all the other months.
Thanks Dean, that explains a lot, thank you.
Thanks, I just wanted to come back in, there's, there's two specific things, so looking at the, the consultation report there, and obviously it's been, you know, reasonably expensive, extensive there, it looks to me there's, there's two themes where there's sort of like a recurring comment there, so one is about the difficulty of getting through to speak to someone through our council systems when they get a difficult letter, or even if they want to take the initiative to speak to housing officers themselves, and then the second one is about direct debit, there's quite a lot of comments about direct debits, and of course, the difficulty with direct debits if you're on a low income, and certainly if you're on a fluctuating amount of housing benefit or universal credit, is when the housing service takes a direct debit that's much higher than the amount that's expected, it puts people over their overdraft limit, they get bank charges as well as the payment not being made, and that's something that's often been seen to snowball. Any comments on, well, those two things, I appreciate actually that the customer service bit in this section is a bit outside this, but comments on those?
Yeah, so direct debits is a condition of tenancy now, there are a note, what you say about the consultation, there are a number of comments in there, not everybody wants to pay their rent by direct debit, we make it compulsory for new tenants at this moment in time, so all new tenants, or around 95% of new tenants signing up for tenancies will sign up for direct debit, but the, the agreement that we made when we, when we brought it into conditions of tenancy was that if you're an existing tenant and you're paying your rent satisfactorily, satisfactorily by some other method, we will just allow that to continue. So we're not forcing current tenants to pay by direct debit, and as I say, we've only, we've got nearly 50% at this moment in time paying that way, so still half of tenants pay by some other method. If somebody is on a direct debit and that doesn't, if that doesn't get honoured and the payment doesn't, isn't made, we, we will move people off of direct, well, it's not, anybody can cancel their own direct debit, any tenant can cancel their DD by going to their bank and cancelling that. If they do that and pay by another method, we're receiving the rent, that's the most important thing. So we will work with people to try and identify what the best payment method is for them if it isn't direct debit. So it sounds a little bit contradictory with its condition of tenancy, but we understand, you know, with, with that, we've got 39,000 tenants, some very vulnerable tenants, everybody with a lot of different circumstances, it may not be the right method for everybody. So I mentioned Credit Union before, we have a, we, you know, we've made a business out of people who are on Universal Credit trying to get direct payments, a lot of people who are vulnerable, who are worried about receiving their housing costs directly to them and not paying the rent, so we get 1.2, 1.3 million per month in direct payments from the DWP now, because that supports customers to avoid them getting into arrears, so there will, there are a number of different options in which we will look to work with customers to work out the best one that suits their needs. The contact centre, I'm not sure what to add about the contact centre.
Absolutely, don't need to say anything more, I think things have been said.
What we'll just say, just very, very quickly, is one of the main calls to the contact centre, one of the highest number of calls is about just getting a rent balance, very basic inquiry, we've done a lot of work recently, so the online offer for tenants to access their rent balance is now much easier and much simpler, tenants can now just text a short number and get their rent balance sent straight back to them, they can also have alert set up, whereas they, every single week, they can have their rent balance text, sent to them via a text, or if they owe two, if they get into two weeks' arrears, a text will automatically go out. So that's been, we've had a soft launch with that, but we're having a, what we're calling a hard launch with tenants over the next couple of weeks, so comms will be going out to all our tenants to see if the service is available. We've wanted to test it, to check that it works under, under a little bit of pressure, we've had a couple of thousand hits on the website for that now, so that will help to reduce the number of calls into the contact centre. We're also, we're always looking at IT, we're looking at web chat as an option, my team are piloting web chat shortly, so another way that customers can come in directly to us without having to contact the contact centre, so hopefully, there are improvements around the corner there, but reduce the need to talk to the contact centre directly.
Okay, thanks, I think I'm hearing something about the plurality, plurality of ways of communication, and that's, that's really good. On the direct debit, is it fair to say that it's a sort of pragmatic approach about using where you can, I mean, it's, it's just something to flag up though about the values of course, and if it's triggering bank charges for people, which is obviously a concern, but yeah, thanks for, yeah, Dean for that. Council Fox?
Thank you Chair, so if people are not paying by direct debit, what, what other options do they have, I mean, I know they'd go to the post office, but do we offer Out and Out, or Crystal Peaks, or, or anything like that?
So, direct debit and standing order are two options, the other options really are, the vast majority of people will pay with a payment card, so they will go to any outlet that you can pay with a payment, which is most shops, it's the post office, supermarkets, and they'll pay that way. We do have a number of direct payments, as I mentioned, we get 1.2 million a month from DWP for, for direct payments, we don't take cash in our area housing offices at this moment in time, but where there is a, an area housing office, there's usually an outlet very close by that people can go and make their pay, whether that's a post office, or a local shop, or a supermarket, so Crystal Peaks for example, there's pay point outlets there, where you can go and pay your rent using your rent payment card. You can also pay online, or you can pay via a telephone call as well, so you can ring up 24-hour, seven days a week number to make a telephone payment, which is really popular, and also the online payment option has, option has just improved, but we've always, we've always had the option of paying via the website as well.
Thank you.
Right, thanks, oh, Council Haby? Right. Thanks. Oh, Counsel Haby?
Um, hi there. So thinking about direct debit, it seems almost as if it's like a phone contract where people who sign up, do you say 95% of new customers will be automatically signed up to direct debit? I think we're factoring, we're factoring in the cost of living crisis and other people's needs, that direct debit and that maybe other direct debits are maybe taken out at the same, at the same time. Is there a way to factor in whether it's the most suitable route for them before they enroll into direct debit? Or is it more of a cure rather than a prevention, prevention kind of thing where they call the customer services?
Well, anybody bidding for a property within the council will, are advised in the advertisement process that the, um, payment of rent by direct debit is, is a tenancy condition. So that's, that's the approach that we have. We will talk to new customers and, which is why we haven't got a hundred percent. If it's absolutely not appropriate for a direct debit for whatever reason, some people don't make snog with a bank account or they've got, um, they've just got a reason why direct debit is not appropriate. We will agree a different payment method for them. There are, there are lots of, you know, I'm sure probably most people in the room pay over bills by direct debit and the advantages of not forgetting about paying the bill and it, you know, it changes automatically if your rent changes. Um, you don't need to worry about that. You're covered by the direct debit guarantee. So any change you're notified about, you get a letter 10, 10 days in advance. Um, we also have quite a lot of work around what we call manual overrides. So if people are paying by direct debit, but contact us to say, actually, my direct debit's due out next, you know, next Wednesday, but I'm just not going to have the money. We will manually override that to try and avoid the direct debit trying to be taken and bouncing and not, and not being honoured. So we, so I have a team that, you know, it's a big part of our work is doing the manual overrides. And we do a lot of that at Christmas. Uh, we do a lot of that at April with the new rents, when the rent increases, um, in April because a lot of people have got arrears and we have a standard amount that they pay towards the arrears. So we will override to make sure the tenant, um, is paying the right amount and knows, and knows the amount that they're paying. And if anything goes wrong with a direct debit, if it's not the tenant's fault, the tenant, you know, the charges are normally refunded. And we've refunded money back to tenants where, for example, the full rent might have been taken, um, in error when it should have been a lower amount, we'll refund that back so the tenant doesn't suffer financially. So that, you know, the standard approach is D D, but we are flexible and we'll work with tenants when it isn't appropriate.
My only worry is, um, I've worked in customer services before and a massive systematic error is double payments by accident. How, how would the customer service represent that quick turnaround? Because a family that has to choose between eating and paying their rent, a double payment will set them back even longer. And if it takes them long to get through to customer services, um, that's just going to make it a lot worse for them in their own home. So would there be able to be set up like an emergency line if something like that does happen? Um, where they can answer 24 hours in a day or, yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
If I can come in, I think alongside this, what we've got is tenancy management and support. So one of the things our households will have, will have a, a named neighbourhood officer as well. And, and again, as part of the tenancy management service, working obviously closely with, with obviously the income management's team, they will say, we're concerned because there's likely to be other concerns with that household. They will be letting the property and they will be talking to that household saying, are you, are you okay? Will you be struggling? Do you need any additional light support? Um, and I think it's us having that relationship with tenants so that, so that early identification that there could be issues and then all but navigating what's the right level of support. The other thing that we're doing, um, as a council is we are reviewing all different types of hardship and support payments. So, you know, there are responsibilities on the utilities for, for people obviously facing significant hardship. Um, you know, we've got council type support schemes, we have got children's support schemes, housing support schemes. Is, is triaging and making sure if there is any other additional support or support for children, that obviously we're, we're coordinating that and making sure that, that that tenancy is receiving as much support as possible. But I think alongside, you know, very straight obviously to, to support people, prevent arrears, um, you know, work that's done. But I think we've also run alongside that, the, the tenancy management services, you know, to actually make sure that, you know, and we often, those offices can see that there are other issues going into a property and finding that that boiler's not getting switched on. There is no heat in the property. There is hardly any food there. They will obviously pick up some of those issues and then we triage that, not just within my service, but with other parts of the council as well to say, you know, we have got families who are really struggling. We are expecting lots of families really struggling. We are seeing ad hoc heating arrangements that are not through the central heating taking place. Um, and, and this is an area where we are very concerned as we move into the winter months. Um, and just making sure that people, um, they won't just own the rent, they will owe other people money as well. And I think as Dean spoke, you know, actually, you know, our absolute life, we do regular communications, you know, out to our tenants and we say, if you are struggling, please come and speak to us. Do not wait till it's a crisis. Come and speak to us because the earlier we can engage with people and families, the earlier we can put in the right level of support for in that. You know, it does cost us a significant amount of money when people lose their home. Um, and also then it places even more pressure on homeless services. Um, and people end up obviously in temporary emergency accommodation, which is not ideal for families, um, or for anyone really. So if there's a message that as members you can be, you know, giving out through your, through your own surgeries, it is if you feel you're going to struggle, don't wait till you're struggling, contact the service by, you know, by any mechanisms. We are doing a lot of work to try and make it as easy as possible to contact us, um, contact your neighbourhood officer. And what we will do is triage support, uh, because what we want to do is make, is make eviction, eviction the last option when we have tried everything and people who work with us, we generally can find solutions.
Right. Thank you. Very important messages there. Are you, are you done with that? Another question?
Just thank you firstly. That was very well answered. Um, I just want to reiterate. So I understand that the council needs to, um, collect rent, but I also understand that people need to feel like they're looked after as well and, and, and taken into account. Do you think it's the time to be firm and fair to the public, to people that live in council homes and let them know the consequences earlier on? Because factoring in mental health, which has gone on a massive increase in terms of whether it's just rent, Covid and things like that, is, would there be another way of, or have you, um, looked at other alternatives to present that information to those people that live in them homes? Or send somebody in, um, to discuss other options for them instead of being firm and telling them the consequences well ahead of time to convince them to pay rent?
Yeah, certainly. So one of the things that we will do, and particularly from, from the, the income management team, is that if we feel that face-to-face conversation will work much better, is that will be arranged. They will go out and they will speak with that. If we feel that language is a barrier, there are arrangements in place to, to address that. So somebody, often we find that many of our tenants have support workers for, you know, and obviously, you know, it may be family support workers, it may be mental health support workers. Then obviously what we will do is join up with those support workers about how we can work together. So it's very much about working with any other support that's happening with, with particular families. You know, one of the things that we're, we're wanting to do is make sure that we prevent arrears in the first place. Sometimes people are not, not, you know, um, collecting the, the, you know, the benefits that they're entitled to. So make sure that's right. Make sure that all the support that is available is put in place. Uh, but too often we find that people will come to us when it's a crisis and our message and our communications that go out regularly is, don't let it be a crisis. If we spot something, please come and speak to us as early as possible. And certainly when we are letting a property for the first time, you know, the, the, you know, my, my neighbourhood officers will be saying to me, you do realise, you know, are you okay to pay the rent? Is this, as well as this house suitable and what else you may need, you know? And they will try and build up that relationship so that they may go to those people if they feel that they may well be struggling. And again, one of the things we do is there is help and support available. Um, you know, and, and, you know, taking possession of a property is the last course of action because it creates so much distress for everybody involved. Um, and, and that's why it's so important to, um, to, to engage with people as, as early as possible. Often we find the people where we are taking possession of seniors who won't engage with any services, you know? And I think that then puts those families in a very difficult position.
Thank you very much. Yes. You're okay there. Just wanted to go and bring in Counsel Auckland, um, and then perhaps we can wrap up this item as the 12 o'clock bell has gone.
Yeah. Um, actually I was going to ask for some certain reassurances, but I think some of them have already been given because I'm, I'm really concerned that a lot of the, the processes that you're talking about rely on access to smartphones and access to the internet. And there are people living in our, in our houses that just don't have that. Um, they, they don't have the, um, access through family either. And with housing plus, and I, I've heard you say that it's going to be under review, but there was always this idea that the neighbourhood officers would really get to know the tenants. And we've had Covid, so I suspect that some of those relationships have really broken down. And there will always be people who, when faced with a problem, uh, are going to bury their head in the sand and think that it's going to go away. But, um, so that was what my question was going to be about. But to be brief, I think that your responses to my colleague over here have sort of, you've, you've given the reassurances that perhaps I was wanting to hear.
And certainly what we have got is backlogs in tenancy management in terms of those visits. So we're doing more, we were contacting people, we were contacting people through the phone and other means during the pandemic rather than visiting in properties. What we are now seeing across our estates are some significant issues because we haven't been on the estates. We haven't been delivering those tenancy management services. So we're working through as quickly as possible those, those backlogs, you know, similar to, to the repair service. But one of the things that our tenants have told us, our representatives have told us as well as, you know, yourself and other local members, is we must be much visible, we must be on the estates and try and address, whether it is waste, whether it is cleaning, whether it is support for tenants, whether it's identifying people really struggling. And that's why we, we're introducing some of the changes that we are on the tenancy management offer to get back to where we need to be. But also I am very, very concerned about people with cost of living. Um, you know, people who will really struggle, uh, people who won't heat their homes and that will create other health issues. Um, and also, you know, as we're going into the winter, try and put in place that additional support so that we can be as well, some of my officers can be the eyes and ears on the estate and bring in other services when they need to, including obviously the repair service, the engineers will come to us and they will say to us, this boiler's never been switched on in 12 months. And, and that immediately brings an alert of how people are being able to keep themselves safe and warm inside their homes.
Right. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I, I think that demonstrates that we are on the same page here. Um, so I want to move to the recommendations in a moment. I mean, I, I think it actually would be interesting, we, I think we are on the same page with this. Uh, I think for members of the committee here, we're probably going to get more inquiries relating to housing specifically. And it will be interesting, I think, to see if, how, what tenants feel in practice matches with the policy we have on paper in front of us. Uh, it might be that we actually get some useful learning from those for ourselves. And we'll perhaps see how that develops over the year. Can we just have a look at the recommendations then? So if we've got a page two of the supplementary pack, they're there, they're fairly simple. Um, I think we perhaps just need a slight tweak to the wording of first one to reflect that we have considered the results of the consultation and have had due regard to their feedback in reaching the decision, the decision being a part two, uh, to approve the changes to the current renters recovery policy. So actually fairly straightforward. Um, so we seem to be on the same page. Is everyone in agreement with that? Yeah. Anyone dissenting? Sorry, put your bike on Ben.
Sorry, it's the new world. I'm not sure whether I need to dissent or whether I can just stick my hand up and ask a question. It's not that we're dissenting in any way. Um, it was just to suggest an additional paragraph.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So you've got an addition. Yes. What, what do you want to propose Ben?
Um, because obviously, obviously the rent recovery, uh, policy is a technical sort of document, but a lot of our discussion reflected on context and what goes around it. Um, and I think that, that should be, um, reflected. Um, so the, the Labour Group believes that nobody should be evicted solely because of the government's cost of living crisis. That puts an onus on tenants to come forward and engage with housing services as soon as possible after they realise that they're struggling. Something that the council under the previous Labour administration made sure happened with the bedroom tax. We made sure that no tenant was evicted solely because of the bedroom tax. And we, but we must ensure as a committee that nobody is evicted solely because of the cost of living crisis. Um, so the wording, and I'll email it to you, um, now that I've, that I've got, is just to propose an additional paragraph that says, believes that no Sheffield City Council tenant should be evicted solely as a result of entering financial hardship due to the cost of living crisis and that both tenant and council housing services must engage at the earliest possible opportunity if financial problems have arisen. Like I say, that's in, in line with sort of measures that we've, we've taken in the past. It's, it's more a, a declaration of intent and interest that officers follow through and, and in, in the way that they've outlined through the discussion.
I, I just, we'll hear from the director in a moment. I just wonder, it sounds like it's more of a sort of motion for full council. And also, I mean, I think we all agree with the sentiment and, you know, probably the exact wording of it. Um, but whether it would cause any conflict with, um, yeah, or any complications around the policy? Maybe hear from the director though.
Um, if it's possible, I think I would, I would like to review the implications. And I think, um, one of the things that we are doing is putting in place a huge amount of support. Um, I think all citizens in the city are facing issues with the cost of living crisis. And I absolutely agree. It's, it's incredibly difficult. But I think one of the things that we are doing is putting lots of work in to, to help people manage within their finance and the cost of living and with the things. But equally, I think it's how you define cost of living. And I think it, having, having something such, so, so significant is a recommendation. I think we need to understand what that would mean by looking at the cases that we take action against. Because I think we do have people who engage with the service, we, we mainly can find a solution. But we do sometimes have people who will not engage with services and those are the, the people that tend to be a result of formal action. Um, so I think, you know, um, I would just, you know, we just need to understand the risks associated with that and how we manage the definition of cost of living because it will mean different things to different people. But happy to, I'm happy to take that away, do a piece of work and come back to committee if that would be helpful. I absolutely agree that we've got to support people facing hardship. We put in a lot of work in to support people facing hardship. But I would like to take it away and look at what the implications of that and how it would be managed on a day-to-day business within the team. Um, and how we should differentiate between, uh, how, how households address cost of living and, and understand the implications of that, if that's possible, not, not against the, the sentiment. But I think it's how we would make that work in practice.
Uh, right. Thank you. I was just going to take some advice a moment. I mean, I, I think to be fair, actually what we see on paper in front of us is the implementation of the sentiment behind, uh, what Counsel Purdon's just read out, which, yeah, I think we all completely agree with. We certainly should do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, uh, we're all learning in the new system, but, um, this is an officer report with officer recommendations. So it's not like a notice of motion where you can submit amendments to it. So it, it, you can either vote for it or subject to any minor changes that don't really undermine it, um, for clarification. You can either vote for the recommendations or against them. What you can't do is put your own recommendations in there. A primary reason for that is that the report won't actually deal with the consequences of that. And therefore you'd be making a decision and passing a decision which is implementable as opposed to where a notice of motion at council without having had full regard to all the due, the due implications and facts of that. So it's not something that you can amend in, in this policy committee in that way.
So just in terms of the, the new world here, is it something where either it's something that needs more work and therefore needs to be factored into the work plan if we decide to do that? Or it doesn't need more work and it is in effect in the renters recovery policy as drafted? Um, and in that case it's covered? Um, I, I, I think to be fair, having heard the advice, are you okay to park that frankly?
Yeah. I mean, I guess the, the point of it is that there's people that are struggling now. We, we, we know of people who have sort of energy bills three and four times what they were previously. were previously, who will be spooked and panicked and could do with some reassurance. And from my point of view, it's not formally committing the council to anything because it starts with the word believes. So it's, you know, there's not a direct financial consequence. Personally, I think that what Dean and Janet have talked through in terms of the approach, does what the recommendation says. By saying people have the responsibilities on the tenant to come forward.
Yeah, Councillor Auckland's comments can be minuted without them being the formal recommendation.
Yes, I mean, that advice there.
Yeah, I mean, Dave's the guy I'd go to for advice, so like, that's fine. Like I say, it was just to be able to put something out, maybe give the comm service etcetera some support to tell people that, don't worry, come talk to us, you'll be safe if you do. Rather than leave them at home with all their anxieties about the future, we could take some of that off them.
So I think just wrapping this up, I mean, yeah, I think the sentiment's clear. And I think actually everything we've heard this afternoon from the director has been all about addressing precisely the issue that you raised. You're quite right to raise it, but I think it's probably covered there. I think those, you know, the comments being minuted probably suggests that we just park that.
Yeah, and learning point sort of taken. I think they need some more about it, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. So with that addressed, and it's an important point, can I just confirm that we've got agreement on the recommendations that are laid out here, those two that are read out? If anyone agreed? Yeah, so no dissent in the end? No, okay. So you're not dissenting? Yeah, okay, you're agreeing. Right. Yeah. Thank you very much. So that's the unanimous in the end decision. So that is the last agenda item there. It has taken a little longer than I thought it might, which is after 12 now. But I think it's been a really useful meeting. I mean, I think we've all learnt a lot about the meat of what goes through the housing service this year, the financial challenges, and what's coming for all of us over the next few months. So I think we can finish the meeting there. Next meeting is 15th of September, but there's got a lot to do for all of us before then. I'll just thank everyone for coming, everyone in the room. And nothing else that anyone needs to raise this up? Nope. Right, thank you.